Good evening, everyone. This is Donna Lane, Chair of the Board of Education. Today is Monday, April 6, 2020. I'm calling this meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:30. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Under God, indivisible, et veritatis. All right, when I call your name, please respond "present." George King.
Present.
Shannon Minaco.
Present.
Christine Caselia.
Present.
Jerry Stevens.
Present.
David Ferris.
Present.
Jeff Falchino.
Present.
Nick Kapoor.
Present.
And Alan Bagliavella.
Present.
All right. So I'm just going by a script so that we do this the right way since we are on a Zoom meeting. So excuse me when you see me looking down, I'm just reading it. We are also joined by at least one of our student reps, which Briggs is on, and members of our administrative staff. When I call your name, please respond "present." Acting Superintendent Joe Cobza.
Present.
Acting Director of Finance, Ron Bonoski.
Present.
Jackie Hollow, Principal Jack Cecalini.
Present.
Intern Director of Student Support Services, Sterling Fencer.
Oh, present.
Instructional Leader of World Languages, Lisa Peterson.
Present.
And Student Representative Briggs Parcell.
Present.
Great. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to and can be found on the Board of Education website, which is www.monroeps.org for public inspection. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B, as in boy, dated March 14, 2020, using Zoom electronic conferencing technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, or smartphone using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please take note of the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. One, this meeting is being conducted in real time. Two, that this meeting is open to the public. Three, that any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. Four, that this meeting is being recorded, and while we ask that you mute your microphones unless recognized to speak, that anything you say, do, or is displayed on your screen may become a part of the recording. And five, that this recording shall be posted to the Board of Education website within seven days. This meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedures. However, I ask all participants to follow these special rules in addition. Please mute your microphone so to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during this meeting if in use. As set forth on this agenda, this meeting will feature public participation. The meeting business ground rules. We now turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, allow me to cover some ground rules of this remote meeting to ensure effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure an accurate recording. I, the Chair, will introduce each matter on the agenda. If a vote is anticipated, I will ask for a motion and a second. After introduction of the matter and upon motion, I will invite each member by name for discussion. After all the members have had an opportunity to speak for the first time, I will repeat the invite to each member in the same order until there is no further comment. Please hold your comments until you are recognized. Everyone will have an equal opportunity to speak. Upon the conclusion of the discussion, I will call for a vote on the motion, if applicable, or take other action to conclude each matter on the agenda. All votes taken on this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Also, remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate an accurate recording and minutes. And that's pretty much the start. So we will go into a report of the Chairman, which I have done tonight. So the first item on the agenda after that is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Shannon, and then I saw Jerry raise his hand, so we're going to say Shannon is our first. Jerry is our second. Is there any discussion, and I will just go in order? George King?
No, no discussion.
Shannon Minaco?
No.
David Ferris?
No.
Jeffrey Falchino? Jeff? Nope. All right, Jerry Stevens?
No.
Okay. Alan Bagliavella?
No.
Christine Caselia?
No.
And Nick Kapoor?
No.
Joe, do you want to discuss the notification of retirement?
Yeah, thanks, Donna. Just really quickly, I just wanted to recognize Joanne Perrigie. Joanne Perrigie has been a nurse at Stepney Elementary. She's been in Monroe since 2007. She not only serves as the nurse at Stepney, but she's also the nurse supervisor. She's really, she'll be a pretty significant loss for us. She's done a lot of work to get all of the nurses, you know, very uniform in their approach to the way they deal with children every day. So we wish her the best in her retirement, and we know those are going to be big shoes to fill.
Great, thank you. We will then now call the vote and go as a roll call. George King? Just have to say aye.
Aye.
Shannon Minaco?
Aye.
David Ferris?
Aye.
Great, Jeff Falchino?
Aye.
Jerry Stevens?
Aye.
Christine Caselia?
Aye.
Alan Bagliavella?
Aye.
And Nick Kapoor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and up first is Briggs.
Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well, and it's nice to see everyone. Distance learning for the past two weeks has gone well. In the first week, it was a bit of a transition, getting used to doing online work, but I've learned that there are many positives. To be honest, I think my favorite part is being able to sleep in a little later. But just going to be honest here. But also, my teachers have been posting videos every day, which have been very useful because I like to be able to pause or go back and take notes. During the regular school day, we would switch every class every 42 minutes, but now I feel like I have more time to complete my assignments, and I just feel like I have more space. Teachers have helped by reaching out to us and answering our questions, usually within minutes, which has been great. And, you know, I miss my friends and not seeing everyone at school, but we make sure that we FaceTime each other and make time for that. I have some feedback from other students. Elizabeth Wannington, that's not here tonight, she said, "Online learning has gone great so far, and her teachers are trying their best." My cousin, who's in ninth grade, said, "Sometimes it's hard to learn through Google Classroom, and even with the videos, it's hard to learn math." But she likes how she receives her assignments at the beginning of the day, and she can plan it out. My other cousin, who's a middle schooler, says, she says, "I like when my teachers do Zoom because it's nice to see and talk to them in real time." Some feedback from the elementary school is, "In the beginning, it was difficult adjusting to online learning, but now they enjoy when they have live class and can see their teachers." Outside of the academics, Coach DeGennaro created a Google Classroom with all of the spring sports captains. We have a Zoom meeting every Wednesday at 2:00, and he gives us information as he receives it. This is a great way for us to stay connected and see everyone. Distance learning works, and I think the teachers are doing a great job during this difficult time. Also to add, students will be donating at least $1,000 to Monroe Food Pantry. Profits from the snowball dance being put to use against coronavirus to support the townspeople. $500 from the seniors, $250 from the juniors, $250 from the sophomores, and the freshmen are planning to do something else, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Briggs. Does anybody else have any committee reports, and I'll just go in order. George?
No, not for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Shannon?
No.
David?
No.
Jeff?
No reports, no.
Christine?
No.
Alan?
No report.
And Nick?
The only thing is, I listened to the Board of Finance meeting a couple of weeks ago, or last week maybe, but I'm sure Ron's going to be speaking to all of that. So I'm trying to get experience in these virtual meetings. It's very difficult, but happy to see everyone. So other than that, no.
Great, thank you so much. We will move on to public participation. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak during public participation, please announce yourself by name and address, one at a time. Once I've made a list of people who want to participate, I will call on each of you by name, and you're afforded three minutes to speak. And hold on, I have my pencil here.
Jen Aguilar.
Anybody else? All right, Jen, you're up. Just do your name and address, please.
Jen Aguilar, 32, Surrey Lane. I just wanted to take the time to thank all of you for all your work. It's hard to reach out to any of you. The kids, the first week, like Briggs said, the first week was a challenge. We didn't think they had enough work, but now they are feeling like they are getting enough work, and it's almost not an ideal situation for learning, but it's really working out great. So just wanted to thank all of you administrators and all teachers for all your hard work. Hang in there.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Those are great comments because they are working really hard to deliver this unprecedented type of learning that we never thought in a million years we would need to administer. So, I mean, it has been a challenging to begin with. I think it's going a lot more slowly, and I think everybody's done a sensational job, all the administrators. Joe, thank you for taking the bull by the horns and, you know, running with this. And I think this is a huge learning experience for everybody, but I think everybody's done an outstanding job at this point.
Agreed. And I also want to tell you all, I keep telling my kids, you'll never have another snow day again.
Let's hope. Anybody else? I think that was it. All right, we will move on to the report of the Acting Superintendent, and I know Joe has a lot, so take it away.
No, thanks, Donna. Just want to start by, you know, I just hope everyone's staying well and healthy throughout all this. And most importantly, I hope everyone's finding ways to stay connected to family and friends, to reduce social isolation. It's definitely a real thing, the more and more I talk to people. I wanted to begin tonight by covering the executive orders issued by the governor, especially as they pertain to schools. The governor issued his first executive order. That was Executive Order Number 7 on March 12. He has subsequently issued, I believe it's 19, I think we're still at 7S. 19 additional executive orders since then. Like I said, the executive orders are listed alphabetically, so after Order Number 7, they followed 7A, B, C, like I said, all the way to S. I have a little slideshow to share with folks. So I'm going to go through all the executive orders, kind of as they, like I said, as they pertain to education. The first one. First one came out, we said, we did Order Number 7. That one was the initial one that came out, the limited gatherings of 250 or more people. That was the original one that said that we would waive the 180-day school year requirement if school went beyond June 30. So at that point, we were still saying that you had to do everything you could do, including going all the way up to June 30. You could mitigate some of that with distance learning and the waiver. We know that the waiver no longer exists, and we're well into distance learning, or at least we're into distance learning, for sure. 7B, again, I think this one is very pertinent to what we're doing right now, and that's the suspension of in-person open meetings, basically saying that the public has the ability to view or listen. That's why we offered this meeting electronically through this venue. It will be recorded and posted on the website within seven days, hopefully, probably sooner. All the agenda information has to be, has to go out on the, ahead of time. Any materials need to go out, submitted with the agenda at least 24 hours in advance. And we've been practicing speakers, given their name and title. 7C was the, was kind of a big one here. 7C is the executive order that canceled school through the end of March. That was the original one, to March 31. It also authorized the Commissioner to temporarily waive any graduation requirements that could be impacted by COVID-19. This will affect us, to some extent, at the high school, especially, you know, more so in other areas or in other towns. I know, talking to a lot of other superintendents, where part of a graduation requirement for kids is to go out and do internships at the end of the year, and they're not going to be able to do internships. That kind of impacts us a little bit with, you know, with our Capstone project. But I know Jake and Ken Ryder and the team over at Masick is working on flexibility around Capstone because it's just impractical for kids still needed to have some time in. And they're making some, they're making some adjustments there. And if anyone has any questions, I'm sure Jake could address them. 7C also, you know, provided flexibility for our student teachers, basically saying that their time served would count for them. And we do have a couple of student teachers that are still on with us. They are not serving in the lead teacher role. They are, they're still, they are kind of serving as cooperating teachers with us. I just realized something. Hold on. I'm going to unshare this for one second.
Is everybody on mute? Because there's a little bit of feedback, so I was just curious if everybody was on mute.
If everybody can go to mute, I just realized I was not taping, but I think Bob Bachman was also taping simultaneously. I'm going to reshare that screen. Okay. So going back to 7C, after the student teachers, another piece that's pretty important for us is anyone who has their initial provisional certificates, that's usually within the first seven years of teaching, plus any of our coaches with five-year coaching permits. Anything that was set to expire between March 15 and December 31 has been extended for a year. So, you know, teachers can rest assured if their certificate was about to lapse right now, it will not lapse, and they'll have an extra year. This, this executive order also waived the components of the Teacher Evaluation Plan. And another one important for us is 7C, on the municipal side, extended the deadlines for when towns had to be prepared, up to 30 days. So it gave, it kind of pushed back the municipal budget preparation deadline up to 30 days. So that's kind of important for Board of Finance. There's more executive orders since then that affect that. Like I said, that was a bigger one. 7B, restricted social and recreational gatherings to 50 people, and we know that's down to five now, and I'll address that because that does, that does affect us. 7E clarified the 180-day school year, and that, and we're going to talk about this a little bit later when we talk about the spring break. It does allow districts to close on their normally scheduled end date, as long as they provide continual education opportunities. So provided we were doing distance learning, we could maintain our June 17, which was the end of, which was the last day of school, pre-COVID. So it says that we can maintain that, we can maintain that date. Good, Bob, Bob was recording. 7F, really, this is more important for USD-1, USD-2 is the education that is associated with our corrections program. And USD-2 is education provided as part of DCF. And that just told those programs that they need, they need to continue classes, just like everyone else. 7G I put on here because it's because our schools are polling places as of right now, the postponement of the presidential primary to June 2. 7H was the, where we started here, the stay safe, stay home restrictions on all workplaces for nonessential businesses. Schools are not necessarily considered nonessential. They're essential to the extent that they're providing meals, which we are, and also allowing for the continuity of educational opportunity. So while we have, we have skeleton crews in the schools, we do have some staff in there. If we have students that need Chromebooks or other learning materials, we have staff going in to distribute those safely to parents. And obviously, we have the meal program going on at Jackie Hollow right now. 7I was pretty important as well. This was the executive order that gave some flexibility for the student data privacy law. Instead of having all these contractors, obviously, moving into distance learning, we've had to, we've had to rely tremendously on all kinds of new technologies. So rather than have all these companies sign on to our student data privacy provisions, as long as they were able to provide digital assurance that they would comply to Connecticut's law, which there's a link available on the Connecticut Data Software Hub, then they were good. And we learned just at the end of last week that Zoom had become compliant or was providing digital assurance, because I know there was some concerns around that. 7I, again, very important for us. This is the suspension of in-person budgetary documents. As most of you already know, this means that our budget is not going to go to the, will probably not go to a referendum. This gives authority to the Board of Finance. I don't want to speak on behalf of the town, because I don't know exactly what the final decision has been, but this gives authority for the town to establish a budget without a referendum. 7L was the one that closed school, that's the most recent one. That's the one that closes schools until April 20. We are, we are in the process still of finding out what's going to happen beyond April 20, and we've been told that we're supposed to have a decision before Friday. So I think the Commissioner has said that, you know, by Friday, he hopes to have a decision to schools about what's going to happen for the remainder of the year. 7M just deals with freedom of information and appeals, extending the deadlines on appeals and extending the deadlines on decisions that the Freedom of Information Commission can respond back to people. 7N is the most recent reduction of social and recreational gatherings to five people. This has become pretty important for us, especially at the high school, where we have re-engaged our security staff and our armed school security officers are patrolling Jackie Hollow, Fawn Hollow, and Chalk Hill, and Monroe Well, and Stepney. And our security team at Masick is, has a split shift. We're not asking them to approach people or get within six feet, but we are asking them to keep an eye on the, you know, on the buildings and grounds. And one of the areas we're having a little bit of trouble with, and, you know, I still, you know, I understand people want to get out and, you know, enjoy the space, but, you know, we were finding that we had, you know, especially young people, especially our high school students, you know, we're going down to the field and, you know, starting pickup games with, you know, 10, 15, 20 kids, and kind of defeats the whole purpose of the social distancing. So we were asking our security staff to, you know, limit people down there. You know, it's fine if they want to walk, and they're not with each other, but if they're, you know, doing any group activities that, you know, is going to violate that social distancing, you know, we're just asking them to remind, remind people to either break it up or move on. 7N, it talks also about the suspension of school testing. This is for universal screening, reading assessments in K-3. This, this was, is actually coupled with a federal waiver that the state had applied for and has already received as well, basically saying that there will be no SAT this year, there's no next-gen science test. And for right now, there's no school day SAT. The school, the school day SAT is a little problematic, or philosophy is a little problematic because for some kids, that might be the only time they take the SAT, and it's offered for free in the school. So we're waiting to hear back from the College Board to see if there's further guidance on that, to see if, you know, they have an option over the summer or maybe in the fall for kids to take it. I have a feeling what we might find is a lot of colleges become SAT optional next year, at least in the interim. 7R is really significant, and this is the last one I'm going to talk about, because 7S, there wasn't a lot for Boards of Education, but 7R was pretty, is pretty big because this is the one that says that Board of Educations are going to continue to be funded. Town should expect to get their educational cost sharing grants. We should expect to get our excess cost reimbursement for special education, other programs, other funds that could be available for programs, other towns. So, and it also requires the municipalities to continue providing funding to local Boards of Education. This one also, also says that school districts should continue to employ, you know, staff. We haven't, we have not laid anyone off. We were taking a wait-and-see approach. We had initially put out April 10 as a date, just to kind of see where this thing was going. And we will, you know, have every intention of continuing to employ anyone that's on, you know, that stays on with us. This does not affect our ability, you know, we've already talked about the reductions that we're going to face next year as part of our budget, as part of our budget conversations. It does not affect our ability to reduce staff for the 2021 school year. The other thing, and as it talks about the preservation of student transportation services and special education services, the big piece here is the piece on transportation, basically requiring districts to make payments to the transportation companies. And I underline the piece that's important here for everybody, you know, to compensate their active employees, so really to pay salary and benefits for the people on the payrolls at our bus companies. Sustain continuity of service. I mean, part of the thing, we want to make sure that there's companies and people there when we do resume services. But the companies have to attest and provide documentation to us that it's charging only those actual and reasonable costs of sustaining wage and health insurance payments for active employees. And then it says, and with that is, is other fixed costs that the company may have. So that could also include, for example, you know, a rental payment of a property or a mortgage payment of property. I am going to, before I continue on with my spiel here, I'm just going to take a pause for a second because of the executive orders and just see if anyone had, any of the board members had any questions with any of those executive orders. And hopefully I can answer them.
So we'll go in order again. George, do you have any questions on those executive orders?
No, no questions.
Shannon?
No.
David?
No.
Jeff?
Yes. On the executive order, the last one specifically would be bus, bus company. Don't we know for a fact that they've already laid off the bus drivers? And we would, in fact, if this is true, we would be paying the bus company that doesn't have employees?
Yep, good question, and Ron, feel free to jump in on this, too. We've been, we started, they just sent us their first, they just sent us an invoice now saying what the remainder of the year would look like. One of the first things Ron and I talked about is, you know, it's contingent, first of all, on making them whole. Now, in my conversations with them, Jeff, you know, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they, they said they had every intention of making their people whole, so for the time that they have been out, they would. they would, uh, they would make them whole again. So, um, they could, uh, do that by, you know, paying them later in June. If they needed to, to make up for the couple of weeks that they lost in March. Can I jump in, Ron, if I'm missing any of that?
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's my understanding. Um, and like Joe said, they, they kind of sent us the first, uh, their first crack at the, uh, negotiation process, I guess you'd call it. I think Joe, you got that this afternoon, correct?
Yeah, just like this afternoon. So I kind of even really had a chance to go through it. I know, uh, Ron looked at it a little bit.
So Joey, is it, is it, is it a true negotiation or is it we're bound by what we owe them? There's no, I guess, leave way in that or is there?
So there, yes, there will be, uh, this is Ron. I guess, I guess I'm supposed to be saying my name and, uh, title each time I speak. Is that the, uh?
Yeah.
Is that the rule? Okay. Um, Ron, Director of Finance. Um, so Jeff, uh, yes, there will be a negotiation because they have to, my interpretation of the executive order is, is they're, you know, um, they kind of have to show us and we have to, you know, do our due diligence to make sure they're providing their employees. With what the executive order states. So, and we're only bound by, you know, a, as part of this negotiation. I think we'll feel our way through what we're, um, required to, um, to pay. I, you know, we're all going through this for the first time. I know other districts are, are dealing with the same thing.
Thank you.
But this is also only on the base contract.
Yeah, it's a good point, Ron. Any of the, uh, you know, this is just for our, for, you know, we're just talking about our, our regular, you know, our all-star runs. This is just for our base contract, which is the three tiers that drive kids to and from school every day. It doesn't include any additional, you know, items that we may have had in there. Um, you know, the sports buses for the spring season, um, end of the year, we always have, you know, the, you know, the, uh, eighth graders go to Holiday Hill, the end of year field trips, going to Wolf Park and stuff like that. None of that stuff would be included. This would just be, excuse me, the base, um, the base program that we get for the bus company.
All right, we will, uh, Jeff, do you have anything else? All right.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Nope, all set.
Um, Christine? Alan?
Yeah, I just had a question. It's probably more for Darlene, but I was wondering if, um, there's any guidance from the state regarding special ed. Especially with regards to, um, evaluation timelines.
Trying to unmute myself. Um, yes, there's, we have, we have some, um, guidelines from Brian Klemetswitz and he has said that, you know, the, um, timelines for, uh, IEPs will, will be, um, taken into consideration. We are, we are supposed, supposed to handle any annual reviews that we can handle. Um, anything that is a triennial or a referral, referrals that we might've had right before we went out on, uh, school closure. And we can't get the kids for testing. We would not be conducting those, um, PPTs and IEPs. And, but we are moving, Monroe is moving forward within reviews that we can conduct. There, if there were, um, triennials that the testing was not completed, um, we will, you know, we can't obviously move forward with that because we don't have students for, um, for testing. And, you know, the guidance that we've been given so far is that yes, they're, they're going to recognize that deadlines are not going to be met. But also that when we get back, we're, we're going to have to handle that pretty quickly. So that's, that's going to be a big push for us.
Alan, anything else?
No, that's it.
Nick?
Yeah, um, I just have a quick question. I know we talked about the SAT being canceled, but is there any, been any guidance from the college board on AP exams? And how that's going to work for this year?
Yeah, there has, Nick. Um, the, I was going to talk about that a little bit later too, but that's okay. It's a good time. But now let, if Jake, if I screw any of this up or, or Lisa, I know Lisa's our AP coordinator as well, uh, feel free to jump in. But as of right now, the, uh, the college board has, um, they're still going to have, they're still going to have AP tests. Um, those AP tests are going to be, are going to run from May eleventh to May twenty second. I believe they are truncating the amount of information that is supposed to be covered on those tests. Um, to pretty much the information that border should have been covered pre-COVID, uh, you know, before we went out. The, uh, the tests are going to change drastically. Any of the tests that may have been multiple choice kind of answers are, are being removed and the test is going to be an open-ended, uh, an open-ended test. Um, it's going to be considerably shorter. I think tests are normally about, um, three hours minimum. They're talking about a forty-five minute test. I, I think a question that's still unanswered and, and I don't know if Lisa or Jake know this is at the, um, is, you know, what's going to happen to the credit with the AP test? And, you know, quite honestly, I think that's going to be consistent to what happens to AP credit now. And that's every college has kind of their own standards for how they deal with AP. I mean, uh, you know, one of my concerns is that, you know, some universities may not accept these credits because, you know, it was only a forty-five minute test and it wasn't the same as other tests in the past. Um, it's, it's kind of premature and I think it's really going to get to the individual schools. Um, but Jake or Lisa, do you guys, um, want to chime in on that at all?
Yeah, I attended, um, it's Lisa Peterson. And I attended an AP webinar about all the changes last week. And one of the first items addressed was AP, um, was universities accepting this year's version of the test. And according to the college board, they've spoken with literally hundreds of institutions and admissions counselors and that everyone that they have spoken with so that they would honor the AP credit according to the existing policy for the school. The college board has put out subject-specific content and structure guidelines for each test and all of our AP teachers have that. So then they'll exactly which questions are going to be included on this year's exams and which content pieces those questions will include. Um, students also have that information. The exams are going to be delivered entirely online. And the tech specific directions are coming out. They didn't say an exact date, but the college board plans to release those at the end of the month. Overview is that students are going to receive an email to the email address that they have with their college board account that has a personalized code to access their exam. Aside from security issues, one of the big reasons for that is any students with accommodations like extra time that will automatically be embedded in their individual test. There's going to be a second window of what they're calling makeup exams. Which I think they're planning on because they might be anticipating some tech difficulties. So if students can't get uploaded and downloaded within the timeframe of the initial test, there's going to be a second window for them to, um, take the test again in case, you know, somebody's internet goes out or something like that. Other webinar Friday afternoon. And if I have any more, you know, specifics about tech instructions, I will send that to the teachers and administrators.
And so this is going to be happening regard, this is going to be happening countrywide regardless if we, you know, we're only closed through the twentieth right now. But if we come back, this is still how AP exams are going to be administered.
The college board has invested in this. This is what exams are going to look like. They have rewritten the questions and, um, actually released what would have been this year's paper exams to teachers so they can use them in their classes. Because even though the question, um, frames are the same as what students have been practicing and learning all year. Some of them are even, um, modified, like for example, the AP US history has a document-based question that uses seven sources, but just to keep the forty-five minute timeframe commitment, they've reduced it to five sources. So even their questions had to, um, had to change. So to my knowledge, no matter if our school, you know, our state is in school, um, this is what it's going to be. There are other states that have already closed for the year. So I think for, um, fairness issues, they have to give the same type of exam to everybody. So this is it countrywide.
Yeah, I was just, I just asked the question because, you know, there's a lot of, uh, topics that students take that are that hinge, that are prerequisites to other things. So, you know, I think, I'm thinking about the calculus exam for, for example. And if you truncate that to your March information, there's two whole months of, you know, integrals and all that other stuff that when you go to college and the college accepts your AP exam of four or five, then they assume you have this. So I think not just in, in public schools in Connecticut, but across the country and post-secondary next year, the fall semester, we're all going to be, um, anyway, that's all. Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
No, that's, those are really valid points, Nick. The other thing, and the other reason why I don't, you know, if the governor were to, or the governor, the commissioner were to come on and like I said, we're supposed to find out this week what's going on for the remainder of the year. Um, I will try to remain optimistic, but, uh, the other piece is there's already states, um, there's, I, there's a couple of states already that have already closed for the year. So I would imagine that the, the test would have to, um, remain in this format no matter what now because they're going to want everybody taking the same test.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
Joe, you're still up.
Is everybody okay? All right. The, the next piece I just wanted to talk about was, uh, the distance learning plan. Um, you know, we're, we're two weeks into our, our interim learning plan. Uh, and there's a lot of good things happening. Our, our staff has been working around the clock to get their classes up and running. And we've had a lot of positive feedback, uh, from students and parents in different surveys at the school. We know it's not, it's not perfect and quite honestly, you know, it doesn't replace the teaching and learning that happens in a live setting, but our students, teachers are getting, you know, more comfortable with this new form of learning. Like I said, our teachers have been working hard to put engaging lessons together. They're in a constant state of collaboration, uh, and all staff have helped to jump in. I, I think the saying it takes a village has never been more true. Our counselors and specialized staff have been in close communication with their students to offer any support needed, calling constantly. Um, we've engaged our paraeducators, our secretaries, paraeducators have been assigned to help individual students with special needs. Um, while the, while all the other ones are connected to specific classes to help out wherever, you know, wherever there might be a struggling student. And our families have been great. They've been true partners. Um, you know, we're all this together, as they say, and I think everyone, uh, everyone has been good about that. Uh, our goal is to continue to provide routines for students and families that best meet everyone's needs. One of the biggest challenges has been fighting social isolationism. Um, you know, I think we all realize that's, that's a real thing, even as a forty-eight-year-old man, you know, it's, this is difficult. Uh, our teachers have gone out of their ways and individual and group messages to their students. To combat this feeling of loneliness. Some, um, initially had, uh, video, um, lessons planned, sent videos of themselves. Some of, uh, some of those same people and even some others have started to use video conference platforms like Google Meet and Zoom. Teachers all over the spectrum, I'm, I'm using those, uh, I'm using those different, uh, platforms. But they're finding great ways to, to reduce so, social isolationism. I know one of the teachers, I think she's even on this, I won't say her by name to risk embarrassment, but I know she drove around, uh, during one of the first days to offer students houses, just kind of beefed and waved as she went by. So, you know, there's, there's some good things happening, but there's, there's a lot of needs as well. Um, some people are still having technology issues. Uh, everyone, I'm sure our parents, staff, myself, I'm sure all of you are being completely overwhelmed with information. You know, I think the most important thing to realize is that this is, I mean, not probably, this is the most seismic shift in public education since public education started in the, you know, as we know it in the last half of the nineteenth century, you know, often trends in education take years, sometimes decades to take root. And if you, if you look at some of the work we've done in this district, you know, you look at the work we've done through teachers, college in the elementary and middle school. That's taken, you know, I think it's been seven years we've had those, you know, that program going. You know, at the high school, they were looking at, you know, uh, implementing a block schedule. That, this has been, that's been a three-year pro, uh, process that they've been going through. They started investigating last year, this year. Looking to pilot it a little bit this year and then provide professional development next year to get ready for it and the next year. We put this, this plan together in a matter of weeks, if not days. Um, so I say that because I know our staff is overwhelmed and they feel like they're trying, you know, to build a plane while it's in the air. And I, I can't commend them enough for the work they're putting in. Uh, I'm hearing stories of teachers up until three or four o'clock in the morning, you know, other staff calling homes, um, you know, into the, into the night hours. You know, I, I read an article recently and it kind of hit the nail on the head. Uh, making the distance between, making the distinction between, uh, true distance learning and emergency remote learning. And, you know, I think what we're in now is we are in emergency remote learning mode right now. To say we're in a true distance learning program, I mean, that would take years to, to vet and get going. So, you know, I say this because, you know, um, we, we need to give teachers, uh, they need time for teachers to continue to familiarize themselves with these new technologies. Uh, they're trying to deliver, you know, the excellent education they're accustomed to providing in this new model. And it really, it just doesn't fit. You can see even as awkward as this, you know, this, uh, you know, this meeting is at times, it's difficult. Um, so, you know, one of the things we've, we've been talking about as administrators is giving, uh, giving teachers some time to collaborate. It makes no sense to me that, you know, grade level or subject teachers are creating their own daily lessons. It makes no sense that, um, you know, you know, five, five second grade teachers are making five separate English lessons or and five separate math lessons where they could, one person could do English, one person could do math, one person could do social studies, one person could do science. Uh, but we need to give them some time to determine, uh, you know, you know, what's important, what are the most important standards that the kids need to address? And how do we divide that up to, uh, you know, to best meet the needs of our students? Uh, like I said at the last meeting where we're in person, the only thing certain is that nothing is certain. Things are changing daily. And, uh, we need to, we need to figure out the best ways for teachers to communicate, to continue to meet the needs of our, our students, like everything else. Uh, this is not new, unique to Monroe. Districts all over the state are grappling with the same struggles. I'm talking to all the other superintendents and they're coming up with flexible, flexible ways to address this. Um, you know, in order, in order to facilitate this collaboration among, among teachers, you know, one of the things we're going to do is designate part of the day, probably about three hours on Wednesdays for teachers to be able to meet and collaborate. Whether we call it a flex day or PD time, it doesn't really matter. It's not, it's not time off necessarily for kids. Kids will still have work to do, but this will give teachers, um, you know, blocks of time to be able to work on, you know, uh, Google Classroom, Zoom, Google Meet, um, and a host of other, um, uh, software pro, literally dozens of other software programs that people are trying to, to use to, uh, figure this stuff out. So we're, we're thinking of, uh, using Wednesdays for part of that. Uh, like I said, it doesn't necessarily mean that kid, that teachers are not going to be available. Teachers will still be available for kids. But, you know, my suggestion is that, you know, we start this on the Wednesday after April break. A lot of, like I said, a lot of districts are already doing this. Um, and continue it for, you know, about four weeks and then reevaluate to see if we still need the time, but we need to give people the time. It's just, it's too big of a, too big of a change too soon not to, not to support our staff who are completely if we're at stress level DEFCON five, that's where, that's where we probably are right now. And I'll give, you know, the autonomy to, to the schools to come up with the schedules that best meet their needs. Um, you know, and then looking at some flexible, uh, some flexible other options, um, to help meet the needs of kids. You know, at the high school, we were, we were already planning on piloting the block schedule in the spring. That could be another way to help address some of these things. So, you know, again, I think we'd be doing a huge injustice to our kids and our teachers that we didn't provide as much support as possible. So, you know, we're all living this life. I don't have to overemphasize to anyone on this, on this call the fact that we're in a completely new world now. Um, there are a couple of big questions that are still unanswered right now. Um, you know, and this doesn't just go for Monroe or Connecticut. It really goes for the whole, the whole country. So I just want you guys to know that these conversations exist. We're waiting for some guidance from state. The first one's around grading and this is really important at the, uh, you know, at the secondary level, especially at the high school level where scholarships are impacted, national honor societies are impacted, valedictorians. Um, just so you know, we did with grading is we extend, we, we put a floor on for grades uh, for the third quarter and that was that no student would get lower than what they had before we went out on COVID. So the only things that could happen is after, you know, we were out, their grades could only go up. We wanted to try to meet kids wherever, you know, wherever we could. So we've extended the third quarter out until next, or this. So we've extended the third quarter out until next, or this Thursday. So we will close the third quarter, and they will get a traditional grade. About two-thirds of the third quarter was already in the books before this thing started. So we're pretty comfortable giving a grade, and that seems to be the consensus of all the schools in the area. You know, that they were going to give a, a letter grade for quarter three. The bigger thing is going to be how do we grade kids in this, this new normal with, with the interim learning plan and with distance learning? And it's a natural conversation. It's not a, it's, it's not just happening here because colleges are going to have to deal with this. Everyone's going to have to deal with this. So we are expecting, like I said, the commissioner on his call last Tuesday or Thursday, I'm sorry, had indicated that he would have a decision for the rest of this year, and part of that was by, by the end of this week. And I think as part of that conversation is going to be how do we start dealing with grading? There have been all kinds of things thrown out there. You know, do you go to pass fail or whatnot? But it's not going to be something that, you know, we're going to be on an island doing. Something that we're going to, we're going to be together. There's a, there's a lot of implications when you, when you start talking about, you know, just wholesale doing, you know, going rogue and doing whatever we want to do. So I will wait for some, some more information there. And then, like I said, we talked about the college board and the AP tests, and then the decisions for the rest of the, the remainder of the year. My, my expectation is that the governor's going to come on this week and tell us, or the, the commissioner's going to come on this week and tell us whether or not we're going to come back this year. And I don't, I don't anticipate another, another, you know, three weeks or two weeks. But who knows? Things change all the time. But the word last week was that we would know this week by Friday where we were. All set, Donna?
Does anybody have any questions as to distance learning? I'll start with George.
No questions.
Shannon?
I know you, everybody is doing a really, really, really good job under this, this situation. I, I heard my son this morning talking about Phineas and Jean on the computer for freshman English, English Lit, and it was, it was great to hear. Everybody's, everybody's doing their part, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. David?
No, all set. Thanks.
Jeff? Okay. Jerry?
Nope. All set.
All right, Alan?
I just want to thank the teachers and administrators for working so hard and doing their best.
Christine?
Nope. I'm impressed with how well everybody, everything's doing. I listened to Christopher on his Zoom or live, you know, things and stuff. So good job to everybody. It's not an easy task.
Absolutely. And Nick?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about, there's been some discussion about synchronous versus asynchronous. I don't, I know we don't have to get into the weeds of how each teacher is doing each thing, but I know that came up in a couple of conversations this last week.
Yeah, Nick, the, we are still in a mode where we're, we're trying, because we understand that, you know, families are all over the place with this. So we're in a, we're still in the mode where we're providing both synchronous, synchronous and asynchronous learning. The, the nice thing is if any of the teachers that are, are using some of the video conferencing technologies, which calls for more synchronous learning, they can record those, record those sessions and a student who may not be able to access it until later that day or the evening, for whatever reason. And we know, like, our high school students are probably helping out with the younger siblings. They can, they can, you know, access that information asynchronously as well.
Great, thank you. That's all, Donna. Thank you.
Great. All right, Joe, you're still up, and this time I think Ron's going to be on for the finance update.
Sure thing.
So Ron Benofsky, Director of Finance. I was hoping to have more clarity for everyone this week. Unfortunately, with a few of the executive auditors that came out, I don't. I, I, I can say this, though. We're going to be saving some money, unfor- you know, if there's a silver lining in this situation. At this point with, you know, between transportation, athletics, facilities, grounds, we're going to be closer to that 700,000 number than where we, you know, we're projecting out at a couple of weeks back. I just don't have clarity. A lot of that's going to be predicated on, you know, still, when, when is the school year? Are we going to come back or not? And also with the transportation negotiations, that'll be starting this week. So that's pretty much it for the, for the current fiscal year. So I don't know if you want to entertain questions now, Donna, for that? And then I can jump to the Board of Finance questions after.
Yep, absolutely. We'll start, George, any questions for Ron on?
No, thank you, Ron.
No referendum?
No, the, no. I, one of the executive orders did, it, it'll be the town council will be giving the authority to the Board of Finance to pass the budget. And that, that may be happening tonight at the town council meeting, actually.
To give the Board of Finance the authority to, to pass the budget?
There will be no referendum.
Yeah, these are unusual times.
Anything else, Shannon?
No.
David?
No, thank you.
Jeff?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Christine?
No.
Alan?
All set.
And Nick?
Yeah, I just, you know, Ron, we, we got the, the data from you. I think at our last meeting, and you had a great spreadsheet that shows the running deficit. And I know that we have a lot of negotiations, not a lot, just transportation, but we have the other numbers that we have to figure out what the savings are going to be. Hopefully, we'll have a better picture of that based on a call that's made sometime this week or later. But you know, it just, we have three months left in the fiscal year. And so we were counting on, before all this happened, we were counting on a certain portion of money from the town side to backfill the Board of Ed. Now, I know we're going to have savings. I know all that's going to happen, but I just, I thank God every day that you're in this role, Ron, because I don't know how else we could have had someone there who knows the town side as well to put these things together. Because the town is going to have to worry about monies that they might need from the contingency that weren't earmarked before this happened, which might influence our budget. And, you know, as everyone here knows, we're legally mandated to come in, in the black by, you know, June 30th. So in the middle of a pandemic with three months left, knowing where we were with sped costs, with all these different things, it's just, before it was moving daily, and I wouldn't be surprised if it's moving hourly now based on how the news is flowing. So I guess my, the summary is just keeping the eye on the ball literally every day is, is so important, and knowing how the funds are, are going to tie out at the end of the year.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to get too off topic, but the, coming out of the Board of Finance meeting last week, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, they are having us do a cash flow analysis, actually extending into the fall. And, and that's even changed, morphed a little because of some of the executive orders, which could delay some property tax payments, which could have an impact going into the fall.
Yeah, and that was, you know, that was another one of my thoughts. I heard on, I think that was the, the virtual Board of Finance meeting that the tax collector said about 85% of the property taxes are escrowed into mortgage payments. So, but then the banks now are able to, the banks are pushing mortgage payments for either 60 or 90 days. And so it's really not just about ending this fiscal year in the black, which I don't think that has been amended by any executive order. But it's also making sure that we have the funds, as you just said. I think the cash flow analysis is going to be really important. So if you have the funds, you know, August and September to keep going.
Yeah, and I, and I think some of the executive auditors that have come out, there, there might be some tweaking that'll have to go on, because as, as things, hey, we're all going through this for the first time. So there could be some unintended consequences of certain actions. So we'll, we'll see how it plays out. A lot of moving parts right now.
Yes. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Donna.
All right, Ron, did you want to go over anything else?
So just regarding the Board of Finance question, follow-up questions, we just, we have a a list of questions. We just have to follow up on them. It went pretty well last, two weeks ago. They want a, an analysis of the fuels. There's, you know, through the budget process, you get new information. We have, we have some better information than we had back in November. We've, we've locked into, we've locked into the fuel contract, which is another, another moving part this year, which I don't want to get into right now. But so, yeah, we'll be, for Thursday's meeting, we'll, we'll be addressing some of the open questions. Nothing, nothing too too major. We went through the three-page worth of questions last meeting and addressed most of, most of their issues. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions, or if you want me to get into anything specifically, but there was nothing.
I do have a question, if I can, Donna.
Yep, go ahead, Shannon.
Were you able to benefit from the low prices of fuel for the lock-in?
So for next year, we locked in in January, this past January. So the fuel wasn't as low as it is now, obviously. So it would have been better to lock in now, but that's a, that's a tough market at the time.
I think it's 2020.
George, do you have any questions?
I don't, Donna. Thank you, Ron.
Dave?
No, all set. Thank you.
Jeff?
Ron, just going back to the bosses. Do you, do you have any idea how many you're going to negotiate this week? I mean, do you anticipate after speaking with the bus companies, have a better handle on at least transition numbers?
I'm having a hard time hearing Jeff. I don't know if anyone else.
I think what I got out of it, Ron, was do you think? I think what he said, Ron, is we have a better, I think I heard this, is a better idea projecting out transportation once we, once we can figure out the bus contracts, the negotiated contracts with the backup.
Absolutely.
Jerry?
No, I'm all set. Ron, thank you.
Christine?
All set.
Alan?
All set. Thanks, Ron.
And Nick?
Hey, everybody.
Nope, no, nothing additional. Thank you, Ron. And I think it's just about, as you're doing already, just, you know, keeping the eye on the ball and just, you know, crossing our fingers as best we can. Thank you.
All right, Joe, I think the last thing up is special education updates. So I take it you'd want Darlene to cover that?
Yep. Yeah, Dar, if you want to give your, your piece.
Yep. So Darlene Fencer, Interim Director, Student Support Services. To date, our enrollment is 466 students. We had no stu- new students move in in the month of March. We did, however, have two students that were referred in the beginning of March, were made eligible. So that they brought us to, from the fourth, 64 to 466. Our current financials, believe it or not, even though we were out of school by March 12th, we did have PVPs that did have some minor program changing, some program changes. And then we got our new legal bill. And then, again, I talked about, last month, I talked about that the outside evaluation line was increasing. So to date, our number is about, it's around 650. We had, I think last time I reported, it was 611. And I do apologize that I didn't put the handouts I usually give you on the agenda. I'll have to remember that now that we're in Zoom meetings. But I will, I will have those spreadsheets for you next time. Again, we are going to have to renegotiate contracts. We, we have to figure out, we have at advance, the IP, CTS that we use for our special education transportation, as well as some, as some of the All-Star for our preschool program. So I think that we, we can realize some savings there. But again, that, that all depends on the negotiations of the contract. So I, I think all in all, with the school closures, that there, we are going to find some more savings in special ed than we would have if we, if we were still in school. That doesn't, but then that, we don't know where that's going to take us in the next step with this, with all of the executive decisions. We're waiting to hear from the federal government about, you know, IDEA and, and what those requirements are going to be. Also, I looked at, I, I know last time they talked about updating the, the pending budget. So I looked at that budget, and because of what we were given on January, in January of 2020, we were ba- we basically were given everything that we proposed this year. So I think that leaves us in a good, in a good place right now. And I, you know, again, I just have to say that with our circumstances right now, we, we don't know what the future will hold for us. Any questions?
All right, we will add questions. George, any questions for Darlene?
No questions for Darlene. Thank you, Darlene.
Shannon?
No, thank you, darling.
Dave?
Darlene, do we renegotiate contracts, or do we go out to RFP, like for transportation and items where there are, there is more than one vendor?
We, we are waiting to hear a little bit more, and I have just, you know, read what Joe showed on the screen tonight about transportation and what the executive orders are. We, we don't have large contracts with these. They're very small. People, Ron, you want to jump in? Go ahead, Ron. He knows more than I do.
So this is Ron Benofsky, Director of Finance. So was that David that had the questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. So David, it was, a lot of this is going to play out the same way as the All-Star contract?
Okay.
The only thing with the, with the special ed, David, is that when we, if we don't pay our transportation, that also plays into our excess cost. So I did a little bit of number working with that, because I was, I was wondering if, okay, so if the kids, if the kids don't have their yearly transportation cost, it gets reduced. Some of them will not qualify for excess costs. And it's, it's a good, it's a good number of them that would not. So what I did is I kind of took a look at who would drop out of excess costs and how much we would save in, in the transportation. And I think we'll still come out ahead, e- even if we had, even if we did not have those transportation costs for the kids.
Thank you. And that's a good point about the ECS numbers. Thanks.
Jeff?
No questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. How are we handling the out-of-district placements now that I would assume they're not out-of-district placements?
They are still out-of-district placements. So when this first happened, two days after we closed, I contacted all of the dis- all of the schools and to, to figure out what their plan, you know, to ask them what their plans were and how they were going to handle it. Because when it comes right back down to it, we're the responsible, you know, the LEA is the responsible party. So I did get responses from all of our out-of-district placements. They are all doing, you know, just some type of distance learning. So they are, they are handling. And that was one of the things in one of the executive orders that, you know, they said to keep all of, all of those intact. So.
Thank you.
Christine?
All set. Thanks.
Alan?
Yeah, moving.
Yeah, moving forward, are, are we um looking at the possibility of programming within the district? Additional special ed programming?
For more, uh, I have not, like, with all this that's going on, Alan, we have, that's, that is not, um, we haven't been having discussions about that um right now. Sorry.
It's okay.
Anything else, Alan?
No, that's it.
Nick?
Yeah, just a lot, actually, of questions, but I just, one I want to ask now, and Darlene, I might, I might follow up with an email, actually. Um, but this is a finance question. Um so when we passed our budget in January, and I don't know why I, I can't understand this, when we passed our budget in January, we budget to the have at the time, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, now, now that the budget timelines are being pushed back, right? And I think I heard at the last Board of Finance meeting, and Ron, please correct me, but the Board of Finance Chair is, is willing to wait a little bit longer than he might in any other year because there's no referendum and the Board of Finance can vote and make it final. If our numbers are up, is the Board of Education going to say to the Board of Finance, the number we gave you was low? To get where we are now over the last three months, we have to go here? Ho- how is that, you know, because it's a lot longer period of time than it is normally, so we have more data this year on sped than we would in any other year?
And that's why, um, Nick, I, I began to look at those numbers and to take a look at the kids that we have now and um what we budgeted for next year. Now, remember, we did add to three lines in January um for s- um for uh additional students and additional programs. So I, I took a look at what we have now and what, you know, what we budgeted for. You know, as, as closely as I can right now, and I think we're, I think we're at a good, pretty good point right now.
Okay.
With what we have budgeted.
And Ron, um, is there still discussion on, I know there was some public discussion on a possible contingency for special education? Is that's, eh, with, but I believe that was pre-COVID, so I'm not sure where that is.
The, the Board of Finance will be putting money in contingency, which could be used for, for special ed. I, I think they're very aware of how volatile it could be.
Okay, because in years past, we didn't have, uh, as far as I understand, please correct me if I'm wrong, there was not money in contin- on the townside contingency that was earmarked for special ed. Money from townside contingency usually went there, but it wasn't.
Well, yeah, and earmarked is probably the wrong word because you build the contingency with thoughts, this is what it could be used for, but it, it has to go through the process, uh, the First Selectment Board of Finance Town Council. So it isn't, doesn't really get appropriated until it goes through that extra process. So if money were needed for special ed next year, that wasn't budgeted.
Okay, okay, great.
Process that would have to go through.
It just, it's, it's such a um, and this was my biggest concern, and I said this at, at our Board of Education meeting, after that Board of Finance meeting. This was one of my biggest concerns about modeling the Board of Ed budget. There's so much that you can, but if you're off by, you know, five percent, which is a very real possibility in special ed, the whole thing um could be uh, it could be an exercise in futility almost at, at a certain point. So, you know, special ed is, is required, and I fully, you know, support that. Just the budgeting of it and the funding of it is so complex. And that's, that's all. Thank you, Darlene. Thank you, Ron, and thank you again, Donna.
Great, thank you. Um, Joe, do you have anything else? Are you all set?
Uh, I am good.
Great, thank you. Um, we will move on to old business, which we have none, so we will move on to new business. And the first item is curriculum proposal first review, and this is new course, um Spanish one A and one B. So Lisa, you are on.
Hi, this is Lisa Peterson, Instructional Leader for Word Languages, and I am proposing a course, Spanish one A and one B. And I'll give a background before I talk about what the course um is going to include. The high school graduation requirement law that was passed includes now, for the first time ever, um, a one-point-oh credit requirement for all students for high school graduation. And we needed a course that would allow all students to access modern language curriculum. The department, all the department teachers got together and we talked about it. In the, in past years, we haven't offered it in, in several years now. We had um something that was called fundamentals, and i- it was very heavily grammar-focused. It, it broke things up, it did it slower. But when we um talked about proficiency approaches to, to language learning, and I spoke with, I had several meetings with Jen Parcell about this, we um needed something that wasn't a grammar-based course. And we also wanted to offer students the opportunity to continue past just the one-year requirement if they wanted to do so. So one A and one B is our answer. I talked to several districts that are offering um something along these lines. A, a couple of districts are offering online courses. The feedback I got was that those courses are not working well and serving the needs of, of many of the students who um who would be served by them. Some schools, uh, school districts start in, in grade school, so they were um their curricula in, in, in lower grades meets it. We have our middle school program, which uh those courses, if you take Spanish one or Spanish two at the middle school, it meets the high school graduation requirement. So we were looking at students who wouldn't be taking language in, in middle school because they needed the extra support in um reading and in, in language arts. So how can we help them at the high school level? So one A and one B will be offered in consultation with guidance counselors and um, and Jen and other special education um personnel on a um, a consultation basis will offer one A and one B. This will be a language course that is very conversational in nature. It's going to uh essentially limit or eliminate a lot of the gr- the grammar, the heavy writing components of the traditional uh one A or traditional Spanish one course, and will incorporate a lot of vocabulary, natural acquisition, conversational um topics. Joe, if you want to go to the slide that shows the, the topics that we plan to include. Um, speaking to oral proficiency, allowing kids to speak, have a conversation about topics that are, you know, common, everyday type topics. We're planning to offer one A next year, pending approval, and then one B, depending on enrollment and interest in the following year. This course will not um include any additional costs. We're not gonna use any um textbook. There isn't a, a traditional textbook sequence that would serve what we, what we want to offer. So it's gonna be individual um or department-created materials, a lot of online um resources and websites, and the only cost that we would incur is the curriculum writing, which hopefully will be able to take place this summer so that we have um, we have something solid in place for the fall when students take it. Questions?
Thank you, Lisa. Um, George, any questions?
Yeah, is this a, who, who are the target students of these courses?
One A and one B will allow a student, um, and again, we'll have to see how this, this, this plays out, to enter Level Two. So it is breaking up the materials for a lack of grammar, a lot, uh, a lack of um really heavy reading and writing. So the students served by this could be those students who would not be uh placed or have chosen to take the current Spanish one course.
Yeah, George, I think, I think to answer your question, thi- this is um probably some of our most struggling students. I mean, the larger majority of our students, Lisa, you probably have the number on the back of your hand, um, you know, come in, have taken Spanish one or Spanish two. I'll just use Spanish. Well, in this case, we're talking about the Spanish class. You know, have come in, taken either Spanish, French one or two before they've gotten to high school. Um, there are a handful of kids that go through high school that do not take a, a world language. Again, those are usually some of our most struggling students, and the new graduation requirement says that every kid needs to have taken at least one credit of a uh, of a world language. So that one credit could be just Spanish one A. Um, but we, we need to offer them something. So it's really, it's aimed at somebody struggling student. Do you know about how many kids in a grade, you know, may end up graduating currently? Now, this can't be the case, and this is in effect for our current um freshmen who, uh, next year will be our freshmen and sophomores. Because everyone's first get impacted by the graduation requirement.
The number of students taking language at the middle school in the past five or six years has significantly increased. So we're talking about a small population of high school students who needed the, the extra support in the extra um language arts course in seventh and eighth grade, who are coming into the high school um without a language course. And it's, it's in the high twenties. For the, the current ninth grade and the incoming ninth grade who, for whom this um law applies, it's the high twenties for um, for both classes. So it's not a large number of students.
So.
That would be the population served.
So the requirement starts at middle school, and if you don't take it in middle school, you need to take it in high school. And if you don't, wouldn't normally take a three-credit class or whatever the credit is for language in high sch- world language in high school, this serves the graduation requirement for those students that haven't done that yet. Is that right?
Correct. The way that the law reads for high school credit, credit requirements in any subject area is that if the seventh or i- if in a middle school program, the curriculum mirrors what a high school offers, then you can use that course toward the graduation requirement. For practical purposes, for us, that would be world languages and um a couple of the math classes that are high school equivalent. And we've done that for years, Spanish one, Spanish two, you ta- start taking Spanish three at the high school. So our middle school and high school curricula are the same, so students who take it in middle school, that's, that's not an issue for them. So it's only students who would need it at the, at the high school level.
Okay, thanks.
Shannon?
No questions, thank you.
David?
No, I think it makes sense and would help those students um like Joe described, so it makes sense.
Good, thank you. Jeff?
N- no questions. Thank you.
Jerry?
No questions. Thank you.
Christine?
No questions.
Alan?
How many kids do you anticipate taking that particular class?
We have um, if we're incoming eighth-grade students, that number in the high twenties, who will need a language course over the four years of high school. Not all of those students are gonna take it freshman year, and a lot of that is um in consultation with program managers and where would it best fit in um opposite guided learning. So I'm, I'm anticipating one section probably be around fifteen students for next year, and then that, that number would, would um obviously, over the course of the four years, those students will need to take it. I, I would like to keep that um class size section fairly small, too, somewhere between fifteen and eighteen. So I'm, I'm planning for one section for next year, and then we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, sounds good.
Nick?
Yeah, um, sorry for all the questions. Um, so one A and one B together will be one credit?
No, one A will be a one-credit course.
So what, what would, so why would a student want to take one B?
They might not.
Because they like language, and they want to keep going. And we, what we had in the past was something called fundamentals, and then we put students into Spanish one. And what happened was, students had already had essentially the first half of the curriculum in fundamentals. So they went into Spanish one and just were repeating in a half a year what they had done in the, it didn't work well. So we needed something that would allow them to continue without putting them in a class where they were essentially repeating what they had already done. So we wanted, uh, you know, a, a logical sequence for this.
And do we have, do, do the teachers, the Spanish teachers at Masic, is there room in the scheduling for two sections of a new course to be put in? I think also, I, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we have an opening or two or one in world language?
There was a partial opening that we will probably not fill. Um but yeah, that's a good question. I think it's gonna depend, you know, your question's gonna depend on uh where we end up with uh course registration and how, how that kind of rolls out, to see if we have enough FTE currently to handle it. Um, this is one of the things I was uh, when I talked to the Board of Finance, you know, one of the concerns, I think we're okay for FTE next year, and if we have, if we have to have staff pick up an additional section, maybe we can do that. But um, down the line, we might have to pick up an FTE somewhere, whether it be in science or world language.
Okay.
It's only gonna be one section because one B wouldn't be offered until students finish one A. So that.
Right, right, right. Right, I completely understand that. I was just concerned now, I, I know several board meetings ago, we talked about the world language. Well, actually, I guess in the budget, we talked about the world language openings. We're talking about adding new sections, but then as this rolls out, we saw in our um enrollment projections that we got in November, that over the next three to five years, the high school population's gonna dip a little bit, so maybe we catch it at the right time where things just kind of fit together. So, yeah, so it was the one credit, I understand that now, the uh FTE, and then the curriculum writing um over the summer, would that be? I, I can't remember, uh, this might be a question for Ron. We, I ca- I know on the hard freeze that we have now, in the current fiscal year, we cut all uh curriculum writing. I don't know if we put that back for next year. Just want to make sure we have an opportunity so that this course can get, can get going, pending uh registration.
Sheila, do you want to, Sheila defends a lot of the curriculum writing stuff. Sheila, do you know off the top of your head?
Uh, yes, this is Sheila Casamelli, Director of Instruction. Um, the monies for this course have been budgeted for next year. Um, you know, in the anticipation, because Lisa did the presentation actually in the fall, but then we got tied up in budget, so she's only presenting it now. But they are a part of my budget that I presented to the superintendent in the fall.
Okay, great, great. Those are all the questions. Thank you all, and thank you, Donna.
Donna, I just had one more follow-up here, if you don't mind. The Le- Lisa, did uh, can, did I hear right that eighty, is it eighty percent of our students achieve the world language credit by the time they graduate eighth grade? Is that right?
High twenties, you know, depending on the percentage, it's, it's close, it's in the high eighties or ninety percent. Um, for most of our students, the one-credit requirement is irrelevant because they continue um, you know, far beyond that for, you know, either out of interest or for, for college admissions. We've got seven sections of Spanish five running this year. Um, and a section of, of French five. So for most of them, this one credit is, yeah, and we did it in seventh grade and, and we're continuing anyway. So it's, it's just those few students who probably would not have opted to take a language in, you know, with this requirement not being in existence.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, George, the majority, not the majority, I, nearly every kid who takes Spanish or French one and two in high, in middle school continues on high, usually takes at least three more years once they get, once they get.
I think that's terrific that we're starting it in, in middle school, and they're, they're seeking to continue and on in high school. That's, that's great.
Great, thank you. So this item will be up for second review with a vote anticipated at our meeting in two weeks. Um, we will move on then to our item B, which is April break, and we do have a vote anticipated on this. But I'll let um Joe start talking about um this situation.
Thanks, Donna. Yeah, I, I don't know if um, if this is necessarily gonna be a vote anticipated now, uh, after doing some, uh, some, some research today. Yeah, the individual schools have given surveys to staff and families um over the past couple of weeks. Um, those surveys asked for preference. Those surveys asked for preferences based on three choices. Um, the first one was, um, have a scheduled, you know, maintain the scheduled April vacation. Uh, number two was remove the April vacation and continue with distance learning, and number three was kind of blend, have a partial, have a partial break. Uh, the second two choices assumed that if we participated in any distance learning, then we could remove those days from the end of the year. So for example, you know, we're currently scheduled to get out on June seventeen. If we were to go in for three days over the April break, the thought was that we could take those three days off the end of the school year and, and on Friday, June twelve. Recent guidance from the State Department of Education, and I know superintendents were all over this today too, and, um, I talked to a few people. Um, the recent guidance from the State Department indicates that that is not the case, that thi- this option is not available. So, you know, the two options are keep April break and get out on June seventeen, or go in and continue distance learning and still get out on June seventeen. And I think, you know, for all the reasons that I outlined earlier, um, you know, I think it would be a good, a good thing for everyone to be able to unplug and decompress. Um, let alone, uh, I think we end up with a number of, you know, bargaining unit, bargaining union issues from a, a, a couple of our unions. So I know we can't go anywhere, but, you know, hopefully there's planned time, we'll give, uh, families time to spend quality time together, and hopefully get outside, even if it's just in the yards, and just you know, detach from the, uh, detach from their computers and all that. So I don't necessarily know that we need to have a vote, because the, uh, the calendar currently has us scheduled to be out, I'm sorry, yeah, has us to be out for April break, and that would be my recommendation, is that we just maintain the April break as it, as it is.
Yep, absolutely, you're right. We don't need a vote since it's not a change to the calendar. And, um, I know in conversations Joe and I had had, you know, the last probably five days, we were really hoping to do this partial break and partial, you know, be in school so that we could get out earlier, and so we were told that that would not be the way, so um, I'll go around to each person if they want to speak about this, but as Joe is saying, his recommendation, and I believe, Joe, if I'm not mistaken, the majority of the districts are in fact going with this way, which is just to take the full April break.
Yeah, I, most recent, um, the most recent, uh, um, survey that I had seen, and it wasn't a, uh, you know, it wasn't, it didn't encompass, it was sent to every district in the state, but um, I think there were fifty, fifty-seven schools who were taking the break, seventeen who were foregoing, uh, foregoing the break. So the majority of schools were doing, uh, were doing the full break of the, of the people who responded to that sort of thing.
Correct, it's just as good as how many respond. There could be more, it's just that they did not respond. Can I go around, George first, if you have any questions or comments about this?
No, it's pretty straightforward to me, so, uh, I agree with what Joe is saying.
Thank you. Shannon?
I agree.
Dave?
I, I agree. It's unfortunate that we can't make up our three snow days, um, but I agree, if there's going to be no difference, then, then, then why bother?
Okay, Jeff?
Uh, although I do agree, I would be curious as to do the seventeen school districts who aren't and are they abiding by the same collective bar issues that we have.
Joe, you're muted, just so you know.
Sorry about that. I, I, uh, Jeff, you were hard to, you were hard to hear, but I think you were saying, you know, what about the seventeen districts that are, and I think, I will look into that. This survey was done before this guidance came out, so my gut is that a lot of, a lot of these things may have, uh, a lot of these decisions may have, uh, may have changed. You know, the, the state is pretty much saying, you can go beyond your original date, but you can't, you can't end before the original date.
Jerry?
Yeah, no questions. I'll say, I just want to add to what Joe said. Joe, you're right, there are, um, two school systems up on the shoreline that voted to get rid of April figuring they could get out early, but you are right, they voted way ahead of this, so who knows what will happen now.
Uh, Christine?
No questions.
Uh, Alan?
I agree with Joe Cobson.
Great, and Nick?
Yeah, I just, I agree, I, I am a little worried about, you know, I was looking at the calendar, and it's nine days from Good Friday to the next Sunday. Um, we're all inside, I think that's like the peak of, well, that's the estimated peak of where this is supposed to be. Um, I think the distance learning kind of gives a little bit of structure to the students, um, living with a public school teacher. I know that the distance learning is, um, it, you know, everyone's doing the best they can. I worry about the length of time. I agree, though, with what Joe said, and my frustration really lies in this guidance from the state. I don't understand why this is the way it is. Um, it doesn't logically make sense. I feel like there has to be another reason why this is the way it is, but based on the information that we have, I would, um, reluctantly agree, but it's, it's frustrating that this is how the state guidance, um, has come out, especially on a topic as important as this with regards to people managing their time and keeping structure to a life that is extremely unstructured right now.
Uh, it's a good point, Nick, and I hope, you know, for any parents who are, who are listening to this right now, I, you know, I know, um, you know, not alone, a lot of the other districts around us, I know Newtown is doing a break, and you know, one of the things that they stressed, and, you know, this was time that a lot of families had planned off for, for, you know, so to speak. Um, you know, hopefully they're going to find some, uh, some routines in what they do to keep the kids busy and, you know, hopefully do, spend some family time, because I do about the distancing piece. Um, I had to have a really difficult conversation with all my daughters tonight to say, hey, listen, you know, with this thing looking to peak in the next two weeks, you know, we're on pretty much complete lockdown, so you guys can walk off streets and whatever, but you know, no more going out to any, you know, and they weren't hanging out with their friends, but, you know, not going to the park and playing games and stuff like that, so. I just hope all the parents that are out there listening to, you know, keep that in mind.
Thank you, thank you, Joe, thank you, Donna.
Thanks. Um, does anybody have anything else before I move to adjournment? Uh, George?
Nope, thank you, Donna, very well done tonight. Uh, new meeting style, and I did well.
It's a new world, I'm just trying to make it work. Thank you. Shannon?
Um, not right now, but it was a great meeting, thanks, Donna.
David? All right, Jeff?
No, all set.
Jerry?
No, great job, everyone.
All set.
Thank you. Christine?
Nope, all set, great meeting, my first Zoom meeting, actually.
Alan?
All set.
And Nick?
Uh, all set. I promise next Zoom meeting to limit myself to four questions, so.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Shannon, and then I see Jerry. All right, um.
We're going to hold him to that next meeting. I'm going to hold him to it.
All right, so we'll have to just do a, the final roll call for this. George, just say aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, Jerry?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And Nick?
Aye.
And I'm aye. So we, the motion passes and we are adjourned. Thank you everybody so much um, for the patience because of trying to go through this slowly, one by one, but, uh, hopefully it'll get better, and hopefully at some point, we will be back to meeting in person again. But thank you.
Thank you.